I think we have a forum here. All members except for Commissioner, for Brian, I think, is that correct?
Yeah, he's in South Lake.
Okay.
South Lake City.
Alright, so having a forum, I would ask the members now if they would please stand with me as we do our prayer and our pledge allegiance. Father, we're so thankful for all the blessings you give us in our life, and we ask that you, especially during this time when we've had inclement weather, we're so thankful that you kept people safe in our county. We ask you to continue to go with our county as we grow and prosper, and we put you first and foremost in all the decisions that we make, especially during our time here in government meetings. But most of all, we thank you for the greatest gift that you've given us, your son, Jesus, in his name, amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Father, for which we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask the members have had opportunity to review the minutes from the past meeting. Any changes, corrections, otherwise I'm looking for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Got a proper motion?
I'll say it.
And second, any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't have any citizens input tonight that I know of for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So at this time, we will go into the first item, which is a variance request of two and a half feet for side setbacks on two existing accessory buildings located at 1016 and 1018 Jessica Rose Lane, Dan Ridge by Robert Tucker.
Robert's out of town, couldn't be here, so me and Jordan went up and seen the property today. And you see what he wanted to do is to make two tracks out of this. And so to do that, and to get forty thousand on the twenty-nine R there, or whatever that, yeah, I think it's twenty-nine. He has to split those storage building, his garage building, whatever it was there. And he's asking for a variance on each side of two and a half, I believe, eh?
Yeah.
Two and a half, yeah. And we looked at the property, to get the forty thousand, this is the only way he can do it, to get another lot there.
Okay, so.
And I don't.
He, which lot didn't have forty thousand?
Well, the twenty-nine R has got forty thousand, and to get it.
To get the other one to forty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
To get that one to.
Alright, so.
And they have to split that line, and he needs the variance for those two buildings, actually split right between them.
Okay. So there's really no topographical issues involved here? It's just basically, we're looking at something that's already existing?
Yes.
And he's trying to correct it?
Years look like, didn't it, Jordan?
Yeah. I don't think Jordan had a problem with it. No, I don't know if I'd call it a hardship. I don't have a big issue with it in terms of, you know, I don't think it's gonna be a nuisance or anything like that. It's just kind of, you got a carport in the garage, and you're splitting, splitting a lot close to each one or two, you know, closer than the setback. But it's a couple of feet, I don't, you know, I don't want to have an issue with that. Don't think it's a bad precedent or anything either, so, you know.
Okay.
If it gets to the variance, this will be settled in the two tracks.
In the two tracks? Okay.
But I couldn't sign off on that variance.
And that makes all specifications.
Of course, he'll have to have Tom's signature on the map, and he'll get that and bring it to me.
There's only other alternative is to move both the buildings, wouldn't there?
Yeah. And they've been there a long time.
It says, where the Regional Planning, for a variance, where the Regional Planning Commission decides that there are topographical or other conditions peculiar to the site, and a departure from these regulations will not destroy their intent. Any variance thus authorized shall be stated in writing in the minutes of the planning commission with the reasoning on which the departure is justified, set forth, so. I don't think this will destroy their intent. You could certainly make an argument that there are other conditions to the site that would justify it, so. It's gotta be, just to lay the framework there.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain anything that you feel comfortable with there. Got a proper motion?
I'll say it.
And second, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The second item is a variance request of fifteen foot on the front setback for proposed garage to be located in front of the house located at 115 Bay View Point in Severell Peninsula subdivision Lot 20 by Jason Hugley. It's you, Mr. Hugley?
Yes.
You should have a copy in your packet, me and Jordan didn't get to go all the way over there. Forty-five minute one way and one way back. And, but we give several variances over before, it drops off in the back?
It drops off.
And I don't see any other way where you could possibly put it.
That's the only open spot I've got on my property, I could place anything on. And to make it any shorter, to actually fit inside the lawn's property, I ended up with twelve footer out, basically, coming in here.
Just have to get a Fiat.
I drive a truck, I'm not getting rid of my truck.
You had a recommendation?
Yeah.
Topography, you think?
Tim's familiar with the property more, so we didn't get a little chance to look at it, but looking at the picture and everything, I'd say it looks like, I'm okay with it. I don't want to have an issue with it.
Okay. Where's your septic system located in front, is it right in front of the house right here?
So it's community septic, community service, the fluid pumped out, and the tanks are actually down at the backside of the house down in the center back here.
Okay.
They won't affect that at all.
Okay. Alright. Do you understand the circumstances, what we're looking at here? You got a proper motion for the variance request of fifteen foot?
I'll say it.
And second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, the next item is appealing decision to zoning officer regarding a wrecker service in A1 property by Chris and Vicki Mash.
Y'all had last meeting give Chris and Vicki time to go look for some bills, I guess, of what he done in the, was it ten years or twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty years, I missed it.
That's what we got here.
And they brought it in last Thursday, of course, we'd already sent it out, but the weather and everything. I understand how they didn't get here in time, but you all got copies of everything.
And I've also got, this is a contract job I've got, but I've got all the stuff on it over the years. I did make copies of this, because this is a contract deal that I do bid on. Y'all welcome to look at it.
When you say contract, what's, what's?
It's contract work, where I contract directly to them.
You'll have to bear with us, since we just got this, and with no opportunity to review it, but. I guess one thing that jumps out at me is, is that these receipts are all just one person, you didn't do any business for anybody else?
I told you I had that letter showing, you know, I've been doing it for Bobby for years. As a matter of fact, I picked up one for him today for the auction. You know, we went back, and that's what we told you here last meeting, we go back to those two people.
Did he, so he had, you got?
He had Bobby receipts, we found some ourselves, that we had.
Okay, and then, so this was your business license?
Yeah, we went and got that, because you know, that was, that's, you know, what y'all were going on about, license.
Well, what we were, when we were talking about the business license, we were talking about having one all along, not just a current one.
But where I was in the trucking stuff, we were exempt from a lot of that stuff.
Okay.
You know, I've been there thirty-six years, my father-in-law run a trucking company out there since eighty-one, eighty-two.
This land was always owned residential for Bay One. What?
Well, we've been at that same position spot, we've never left, never moved.
Okay, I got, I see where you brought the information, okay, as far as that goes. But here's where I'm at with it, alright, is this. Is that, basically, you were appealing decision from Tim?
Yeah.
But you didn't provide Tim with this information before you appealed?
Well, at the time, we were asking for a variance, we didn't know till the last meeting, we couldn't ask for a variance. That was brought up, you know, at the last meeting.
Yeah, but there was never a variance.
So there's this understanding there.
Yeah, okay, but the thing was, is that Tim's decision, at the time.
What we done.
Based on the information that you gave him was correct, would you say?
Well, he said we was grandfathered in, I'm somebody he was talking about from the trucking. But he said I couldn't get on the rotation list or put a sign up.
Yeah.
You know, because we told him we was getting rid of the road trucks and going strictly to the towing, and it's all we do now.
Okay. Because I'm trying to figure out exactly what I'm voting on tonight, okay?
You, I know at the last meeting, you asked for that.
I did, I wanted to see, to see if there was other here, because there was discrepancies in there, okay?
See what we could do.
So.
And there's some other receipts in there.
And, and now that I have this information, I'm just saying, is this, is that you're appealing the decision of what Tim's decision, I mean, what decision he made and told you originally, okay?
I saw him as what it is.
Yeah, alright, so this is what this is about. It's not whether or not we say that you're grandfathered in, okay? If this comes up later, and then this proves then that you're grandfathered in, you're grandfathered in, alright. But my, in my opinion, what I'm looking at is, is that when Tim made his decision and told you that, you had not provided him with any of this information for him to make a decision on.
It's just as simple, just talking to him like I've done over the years when I went to build a building or anything, what do we need to do? Been friends with him for years.
So, did he tell you at that point in time that you needed to provide him some information to prove that?
No, we never did do anything for about two years.
My decision was that, you know, Chris drove trucks for sixteen years, I, I mean, he told me that, I knew that, I know.
I mean, there used to be five, six tractor trailers running in Alex's property.
Yeah, but I, I never thought of Chris as a wrecker service.
I've always had, I, I, I said start-out re.
I knew he had, I told y'all when we, the first time, I knew he had a rollback, but I've never thought of him as a wrecker.
I've just never been on the rotation list, never had no urge till the state raised it, for what they got.
That's true, to prove to you all, but I mean, they looked for commercial property for six months.
We tried.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't want to be on the Dan Ridge side.
They tried, they tried for six months, looked for commercial property, which.
The rotation list is split up by Duncan Valley.
And he couldn't find it.
I mean, it's just making it hard for a working man to thrive. I mean, it's, it's, and at my age, it don't make sense to me, why spend three, four hundred thousand dollars for a piece of property? When we've got thirty-plus acres sitting right there.
Okay. But we're getting, I understand that, and we're getting, but I think we're getting away from what we're here for. The thing was, is that Tim made a decision at that point in time, and you're appealing his decision. But at the point in time when he made that decision, he didn't have this information here, to make a decision off of.
As it's simple, it's just going up one day, establishing.
I know that.
He told us when he knew proceeds prior to ninety-eight, was it?
Well, that's for this, for this meeting, for the, whichever one we had.
We didn't know we could even do this, and we started coming to his meeting several months ago when the battery deal started.
I, I, I understand all that, I, I, I'm still saying, I'm looking at the timeframe here.
But we've got to adjudicate, I mean, if they are grandfathered in, they can, according to state law, they can expand within reason.
Correct.
Which is what they're wanting to do, basically.
Correct.
That's what I'm hearing, so.
And all I'm gonna do is fence in a small area, I probably won't get three or four a month off the rotation list. But that three or four a month could be anywhere from two to three thousand dollars a month income.
So.
And I'm up off the road, you're not gonna see it from the road.
So the question, the question I've got is this, Jordan, is the fact that, okay, so he says, I've been in business, I'm grandfathered, okay? As far as that goes. The, the issue I have was, is that when Tim made his decision, he made it off of what was verbal there. He had nothing here as far as any kind of documentation to say otherwise.
So you think it's your verdict?
So his, his advice to them was, was that if they wanted to, I guess, appeal his decision, or whatever he gave them, that they needed to come here.
No, no.
No, I never told Chris and them that, I told them to go look for commercial property. I think they had a conversation with John Neal one night after a meeting.
And he just told us.
They didn't even know you could appeal my decision.
We didn't know you do this, never know this existed.
We thought we was doing very.
Yeah.
And we thought we was doing the right thing, you know, when I spoke to you.
You could appeal. And, and had a conversation with John Neal one night after the, was it River Property?
It was after one of the meetings over the best thing or something, I don't remember.
Best or the other, but anyway.
We didn't know this even existed, we didn't know we had this opportunity. That's like when I built my shop in oh-seven, you know, I went behind my house and undercut fourteen feet and spent thousands of dollars to put my shop back there, because, you know, we were told we couldn't build out because of the rightway and, and in front of the house, but if I know about a variance, I could have saved myself thousands of dollars I could have put towards the shop back in oh-seven. Well, you know, that's, it's, 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 you know, nothing to do with this, I'm just saying, we never know this existed, we never know this was an option.
I think the question is, are they grandfathered in? To me, that's.
I feel that we are.
It's a little gray area here, in my opinion, I would ask for your opinion.
I just have a few questions.
So, okay.
Oh, alright, attorney's got a question.
Um, well, first, just so everybody understands, I think the Mashes have been here twice.
Yeah, this, this is our third time.
This is all, just so you understand, that everything that has been put into the record to date is a part of this process. In other words, it's not, you know what I mean, it's not a piecemeal process, it's whatever that was introduced before in the first two meetings, as well as this. Just with, with respect to some of the stuff that you had presented after that last meeting, because I don't, I don't know, and I don't know if the board knows, what is, is, what, what exactly does Bobby's used cars do? Are they an auto dealer?
He's got a dealer's license, he's got a towing service he sells, he buys wrecks and fixes them and sells them. He's got, I'm sure, some junk cars at his place, he's also a bail bondsman in two or three counties.
So he has a motor vehicles license?
Yeah, he's a well-known person, yeah.
And with respect to your relationship with Bobby's during this timeframe, what did you, what exactly did you do for him?
I picked up cars at the auction, was he bought them, whether the auction was here local or wherever, but I'd pick them up at the auction when he bought them. They, when they buy a car at auction, especially at salvage auction, they got so long to get it out, that they have to start paying big money. So I've been, you know, I, I, over the years, I brought them in, you know, and send a truck down there and get them, bring them to the house. They might be there a day or two, they might be there, you know, eight or ten days.
So there was.
He had time for him to come down and get them, or, like today, I picked one up at the auction, but I was, I had cars I picked up for Farm Bureau in Sneeville, so I took one over to him in Sneeville and picked up a wreck that he had, and went to a body shop over there, another body shop, picked up a wreck.
So the, the, these, all of these receipts with respect to Bobby's.
Yes.
They have to do with Bobby's purchase of vehicles?
Yeah, now, some of it was wrecked, some of them wasn't, I think we might have picked some up at residence that he bought.
Uh, the only reason I'm asking is your receipt says sold to Bobby, so my question is, your relationship with Bobby's at that time?
Well, it's just receipts, you know, we're just a small operation, you know, I don't have a lot of education, we, you know, I just. You know, I have, keep a receipt book in the truck, that's written, it's probably multiple receipt books when you got two or three trucks. Like I said, we, at one time, you know, they used four or five eighteen-wheelers running out of there down there.
My, my question had to do with, with respect to Bobby's, were you, were you going to auction and purchasing these, or to a sale, or was?
No, he buys.
Hang on, or was Bobby, Bobby, Bobby was going to these auctions and sales?
He can do it online a lot of times.
Okay.
You know, years back, he'd go to the auction and buy them, but he might buy more than one. You know, up till the last few years, most roadbacks couldn't handle but one car, you know.
And so he would, um, he would have you go to these sale locations?
He, if he bought them, if he didn't have time, he would, you know, call me or something, and I'd go pick them up.
At that time, was Bobby, was Bobby, and I, I'm gonna say Bobby, but was, was, was Bobby, because I don't know his last name, so.
Bobby Kinsler's his name.
Okay. Uh, was Mr. Kinsler, at the same time, did he also have a tow service or tow vehicle service?
I don't know when he started his tow service, I know he's had it for years, but he, he does so much, it, it's just easier for me to pick them up and him to come down when he's got time. Sometimes he'll come to the house, you know, today, like I said, I picked one up this morning, and I was going over to pick it up anyway, so I just took one over.
Where were the sale lots and the auction areas?
You got IA, you got, years ago, you had one up at Morristown up there, you used to have the old one down there off of seventy-five, there's a split, I think it's.
Lenore City?
Odessa or something.
Odessa.
It's either Lenore City, or I ain't sure what it is.
And so, and you would, you would.
And I got to know him through when I done for Discount Motors, Phil Moore, because I used to go with Phil to a lot of the sales.
And so you would take them, you would go and get these vehicles wherever that Bobby purchased them, and you would bring them to your lot? My, one question I had is, is, and I know he was in Sneeville, but if, why not just take them to his lot, I guess, at the time, in other words?
Well, it's, because the tow bill's higher when you go to Sneeville, it's eighty miles over there to his place from me.
And with respect to the, um, and I'm trying to, try to get this, did you buy them?
No.
You didn't buy them?
No, no.
You picked them up?
All I am.
For Bobby?
Takes them up for Bobby, yeah.
Okay.
Most of this stuff nowadays is done online, they go online, they sit in bidding on the line, you don't even have to show up no more, it's all computerized, online. But these auctions, you know, are everywhere, I mean, I picked up before in Carolinas for people over the years.
Did you have a formal contract with Bobby?
No.
The contracts that you were talking about, what contracts are they? In other words, like.
They're for IA, I mean, that's my primary deal, I do most days.
You say IA, which, for the.
Insurance Auto Auction.
Where are they located?
The main office is in Illinois, the, you know, I run a lot out of the terminal down at John Sevier, which is the old Cidisco, I think it used to be called.
And the, um.
You know, you got Cold Park down in, they call it Vonore, but it, or Madisonville, but it's not, it's way down below it, that's another place you can pick, you know, wrecks or something.
And with respect to the storage, um, it looks like, it looks like the storage bill was, uh, ten dollars a day? Was that, was that just a rate for, well, this is in.
That's just kind of something me and him worked out over the years back, and I didn't raise it till, just to, you know, I think, I don't remember now, just a few years back, I raised it up to fifteen or so dollars.
And with respect to the, I think this came up either the last meeting or the one before, with respect to the Internal Revenue Service, these charges, or these, this, your tow business, was it ever identified on any of your tax documents?
It was done under my trucking, because up till recently, we changed it to name to towing because of insurance purposes, because we did cease the over-the-road trucks.
Was that when you come to?
That's when I come to you. And we done that after the COVID hit, and some family issues coming back.
When did you quit driving, driving?
I sold my Kenworth, was it twenty, well, it was right after Roy passed, so.
Twenty?
Yeah, it was right after, just a few months after Roy passed.
And I think I, I want to be sure I understand, that's my last question, I know that.
But I've been running a dump truck in Skister out of there for years too, doing driveways and different stuff like that.
The CDL question I had asked you back in, you had indicated, we, we talked about that, I think, the last time, do you currently have one?
Yes.
When did you get your first CDL, if you remember?
I can't remember, I'm guess ninety-four, ninety-five, so that's when, sometime when I started dump trucking, when I left Jeffrey Chang.
Okay, and do you remember who you were with, or who you were working with when you got your CDL?
I had my own truck. They were taking fuel tanks up from these mom and pop stores, I saw them contaminated dirt all the time.
Thank you.
And like I said, y'all are up to look at these, you know, don't want no pictures stuck of them, but, I mean, they's several here, and these are like daily sheets.
Okay, so, either the, I guess, either the issue is, is that he's presented information showing that he's grandfathered, okay? Which may, may or may not be the case, alright, it's to be determined. But I, I'm still going back to the thing is, is that, that Tim made a decision, okay? And he based his decision upon the conversation that he had with them, that's where that goes. And he told them that basically, that they were not grandfathered, correct?
In my opinion.
In his opinion. And his opinion was based on the information that he had at that time. Now then, there may be other information now that's showing that, that that, that his opinion might have been changed if he had had new information. So I don't know that, I mean, and I'm not saying that, okay, all, all I'm saying is, is that, that's the way I'm looking at it. So I'm not sure that you made the wrong decision then, okay? And it may come to light that, yes, now, that the circumstances and evidence that's been presented for us may say, oh, by the way, yeah, he, he may approve his case.
Now, one reason we did go to pop was to give him a heads up that we were doing a way trip from the trucking strictly to the towing, because I'm telling you, this is a dog-eat-dog world. They will call and complain on each other like a, a bunch of babies.
And that's another reason I thought he wasn't grandfathered, because, he's right, those wrecks, those wrecker service, they can tell on each other.
But I feel that we so is doing it, we just think, we just was not on the rotation list, okay? And I had no, like I said, no urge for it till the state raised it to what they have now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Uh, just for the purposes of the, of the board, and I know you guys have done this a few times, the, Mr. Mash has appealed the decision of, of Tim, regardless of whether, despite what evidence Tim might have had. This body is what the law calls a quasi-judicial body, meaning that you weigh evidence just like a judge does, just like a jury does. You consider the credibility of the evidence, you consider Mr. Mash's statements, you consider, um, uh, the opinion of your expert, you consider the proof, you can consider the kind of proof that he has presented, just like a judge and a jury can. You can look at the nature of it, you can look at what it is, you can look at his timeline, the history, but you all weigh that evidence, just like a judge does. There's, in other words, what I say that is, there's not necessarily a black and white answer, or some seminal event in time that says he is or he is not. He has presented evidence to appeal Tim's decision, your job is to decide whether or not he has presented evidence that would establish him as grandfathered, or, or, and/or, that there was not a cessation. I think there was a question of whether he had ceased work for, for six months, so. That, that, that's, that's your all's duty.
Okay, alright, so it's, the decision that Tim made then was sort of irrelevant, it's based on the information that we have now.
Since he appealed it, yes.
Yeah, okay. Does everybody understand that?
Yeah, is it, so it's up to us to decide whether he want, he's grandfathered in?
That's correct, based on the information that you have in front of you, right?
I think there was a stoppage of six, I think there was, was there a question, I think that's why you're back.
Do I?
There was a question.
Yeah, they brought.
Yes.
Whether there is, was, there was a stoppage of six months.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, last, you all, you all wanted to see consecutive, you know, and I feel we done it, basically could. And we. Uh, and we went to the lot to go back to these people. I mean, that's a lot to ask out of people you've been doing business with for years. You know, uh, Joe's Garage, somewhere in the later years, I started charging direct to the customers. That's where you see the bills changed there when I went to Joe's Garage, you know? And y'all have been welcome to call these folks, you know?
How long does their business have to cease in there, Tim, before they can't be grandfathered in?
Six months.
Six months.
Six months.
Oh, damn.
So they, so he would have to establish that he's been operating continuously for, since nineteen ninety-eight. Really, um, without a cessation of six months. And the question is, is this evidence along with his testimony here, which is not under oath, but of course, you don't do under oath, so. Is that sufficient to demonstrate to you that it's been in operation without cessation this whole time?
Based on this evidence that he brought us to that?
And when I sold the trucks, like I said, that's when I went with a contract IA to keep the trucks moving. You know, because if the trucks ain't moving, there ain't no money coming in and you can't pay bills.
You could.
And y'all are welcome to look at our lease.
Conceivably, you could be in operation without making any, you could still be in operation without making any deals, any sales. So it's not necessarily, the receipts are just one aspect, but ideally, to me, ideally, there would be a business license that was maintained continually. And other than that, I don't know how we prove. So this is gonna have to be a, a judgment call or, you know.
Well, it's gonna be based on the evidence and the evidence is what he brought tonight. And if you're comfortable with this evidence then, then, then basically, it probably looks like he may have proved his point. Uh, that's, that's what you gotta decide, I think.
Questions?
You have any questions? Do you feel like you need anything else? Do you feel like you have enough information to make a decision?
I make the motion. We accept his receipts and what he's brought in to grandfather him in.
Okay, I got a proper motion. Do I have a second? Okay, with motion fails due to a lack of second, so, uh.
I mean, what else can I do here? I've tried to do everything y'all have asked. You know, I spoke to you personally at your office, Terry.
I, I know. I told you what, that some of the information that you needed to bring, yeah.
Well, you also told me, you know, why didn't I just go ahead and put a sign and went at it and then worry about it?
I don't remember saying that, but I'm just saying this, is that, uh, there was two options I gave you. One is to prove that you were either grandfathered in or you could ask for a rezoning, so.
Well, after what we've seen with Mr. Bruner last night, that is.
I know, but we're just, I'm just telling you what your options were, so.
So y'all are just crippling a businessman trying to keep him down. Y'all are not here for the lifetime residence.
We ain't voted yet.
Okay.
All right, further discussion?
What would it do to rezoning?
Well, we, we, I mean, he, he would just have to come back and ask for rezoning. He'd have to ask for that.
And they put Mr. Bruner through immortal.
Yeah, but that's not, you know, that, that's really not the issue now. The issue is, is that it is what's on here right now, so. It's, it's, it's either this, you're saying that the information that he brought proves his point, that's where that goes, or it doesn't.
We just have to take his word on all this that he brought in.
Well.
Yes.
That's all.
That just, yeah, what else can you do?
Look at all these too.
That's all we have.
I mean, these are only ten ninety-nine, it's a contract.
You could try to bring in tax returns or, you know, things like that. I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't want to look.
It's all going to show under trucking and Joe Mackhouse done ours for years. Uh, we did speak with them, but their computer don't go back all the way to then. You know, his daughter's done it now. Lindy's, Lindy's done it now. So.
The thing is, is if he, he brought the tax records and we can't distinguish between the two, then we still haven't gotten anything established.
Same place, yeah.
I mean, it seemed like y'all got me chasing my tail.
No, it's, it's not that. It's just that, uh, we had to feel comfortable with what's, you brought before us, that's why it was down there. And, uh, so.
And I have tried, like I said, we thought we had a lot leased. That fell through. We even looked at buying a lot over Newmarket, but when you're fifty-five years old and you're looking at eighteen hundred dollars a month for the next twenty-five years, it just don't kind of ease that crap.
Yeah, I told Chris as far as rezoning, I mean.
I think it's possible down there. It's no commercial on my boy road at all.
He'd have to do Iowa, he'd have to do Iowa.
No, it'd be C two, C two. And there's nothing there to do there, so, I mean, it'd be tough.
I mean, it's gonna be very low impact. Nobody's gonna see it. You know, there's not been no neighbors in all these thirty-some years complaining, to my knowledge.
No, I agree with that.
You know, we've always tried to be good neighbors. My place ain't the nicest place they is down that road, but I promise you, it's, it's not a dump. And it's gonna be right there at my house. I don't, you know, I don't want to be looking at them as. You know, at my age, I figured maybe I've got another ten years left, maybe.
We either need, we need to, some, our resolve is, it's either the appeal, the appealing of the decision is, is good or it's bad. We need to decide one way or the other.
You had a motion, but no second?
Yes.
Can we second the motion now?
Well.
Is that legal?
I said the motion died because of the lack of second. You're welcome to open it back up, I think.
Parliamentary procedure. Can he make a motion? We consider that the same meeting?
It's not a valid motion. Somebody else can make a, they can make another motion.
Yes.
To make another motion.
Somebody else other than the original motion.
Other than the original motion, yes.
You'd have to have a new motion and then there would have to be a second. The original motion they couldn't make.
Oh, I can't make it?
No, but you could, anybody else could.
Uh, any of the other three?
Yeah.
He could second it, correct? Yes, but he could not make that motion.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we grant the, the appealing of the decision based upon the information that he has provided here showing that he is, this proof that he's given us here shows a continuation of business during this time.
Did you just make that motion?
I made the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I got a motion and I got a proper second. Now then, any discussion? Okay, I'm gonna explain that to you that my decision is based upon, as I've scrant, gone through here. You know, it's hard for me to dispute this because it's here in front of me. Uh, you know, maybe I should have not be hasty and maybe I should have done a little bit more research. But then there's times when people present things before you, you know, if it's not truthful, it's not truthful, okay?
True.
So, that's, that's, that's my reasoning. All right, any other discussions? That's where it goes? All right, being none, we're both. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. I apologize for what I got out of hand earlier.
No problem. It's just a process. We just had to wade through it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. That was the last item on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn for rezoning appeals.
I'm like a motion.
You got a proper motion?
Second.
And second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Where'd you come from?
That's a story that goes back a long time. How far back can we go?
Well, my mom and dad.
Most, most recently, white. All right.
I bet.
I hereby call order the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, it looks like we do have a quorum. All members here are present except for Chairman Brian Morgan. Uh, I would ask the members if they had an opportunity to review the minutes from the past meeting. Any changes or corrections, please? Nope? Otherwise, I got a, I got.
Second.
Motion is second. Proper there. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, citizens in is put tonight for, for that. Uh, Mike Foley?
Mr. Foley, if you try to keep your comments around three minutes.
I will, I will. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mike Foley, three eighteen, Oak Mr. Drive in Dandridge. Um, I first heard about the rock quarry in Piedmont at your October meeting last year. I took what I heard at face value, but after listening to frustrated citizens from Piedmont at the recent county commission work session, I went back and listened to it again on YouTube. Here's how it was introduced, and I'm gonna paraphrase, just paraphrase very slightly for brevity. In the county, we have a farm. Fella is harvesting rock off the farm. He is not able to crush the rock on his farm the way it's currently zoned. But he is taking this rock and he is hauling it across the county line to where he has a crusher. It's in Sevierville on a very small piece of property directly across from, from a pretty nice apartment complex. And they are crushing the rock there and selling it as retail and Sevier County is getting the sales tax. Another commissioner then asks, how much are they getting? And the answer is, it's somewhere around three to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. After doing some research and taking a drive to these two locations for myself, I'm left with a lot of questions. Why was this issue presented in this manner? The Fella is a large construction company. The farm has a rock quarry. And the very small piece of property is part of the company's eighteen-plus acre business location in Kodak. Where did the sales tax estimate come from? Since counties only collect two and three-quarter percent of total sales tax, what retail sales is that based on? And what possible assurance could there be that Jefferson County would receive that much? Then I reviewed the YouTube audio of your November meeting. There was a semantics discussion about terms like rock harvesting, mining, crushing and quarry. It seemed to conclude with a statement, they can mine it in A1, but they can't crush it because it becomes a separate issue. It becomes a quarry at that point in time. How can that be true when our zoning resolutions, resolution specifically limits mining to the I one district? And how could it not be a quarry if the construction company has a T deck permit issued in September of twenty twenty-two with an activity description of limestone quarry? But here's what really stands out to me from that November meeting. The special use resolution already stated that such, that quote, "Such use will not seriously or significantly injure the appropriate use of the neighboring property," end quote. You even took the extra step of adding the words "or cause nuisance." Yet after acknowledging that dynamite has been used at this site, no one asked how that is currently impacting the neighboring property. Instead, the resolution was amended to add crushing of rock in A1. If passed, this would effectively be an end run around the zoning resolution to allow mining on this site without rezoning it as I one. And that would be the antithesis of the, the prime directives of a regional planning commission. Jefferson County is truly at a crossroads, and right now, you hold some of the most important positions in our local government. So please accurately state the issues, seek out all the facts, ask the tough questions, personally visit sites, and engage with the public. The decisions you make will have a daily impact on the lives of our citizens for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ryan Asbury?
Well, I don't have to drive to see the rock. I just walk out and see the yard and see the damn thing. The dust, the dust. Oh, okay. Well, we won't do it again, maybe. Uh, anyway, so we, we talked about the nuisance. It is a nuisance because when the trucks come out on the highway, the dust boils out on the highway and sometimes when cars go through them, they disappear in the dust cloud. And then you can see, I've got pictures of dust that is drifting off the site. I can, I mean, it's, it's, I've got for dust from like from the soil and dust from like from the drills that are going in there. And, uh, the, the noise from the trucks and going, when they come out of the site, there's two houses there at, uh, Bill Relf's lane that are within, say, a hundred feet, fifty feet or a hundred feet where the trucks come out. And you, you know, what a dump truck starts, loaded dust trucks gonna sound like coming out of there. Then you got empty ones coming in where they put the brakes on, they squeak, and sometimes those guys just like to put their jack brakes on so that you hear them breaking. Uh, we have to listen to the blasting. The blast shakes the house and it rattles the dishes. The excavators with the breaker hammers, you can hear them inside the house, beep, 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 beep. The backup alarms on the, uh, the, uh, the, the equipment when it backs up, beep, 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 beep. You hear that all the time. Uh, the, uh, the clack, clack, clack of tracked equipment going back and forth. And if you, you've heard a big bucket scooting along rock, it's kind of like a scratching a, a chopboard with your, your fingers. And we can't go outside in the morning and have a, a quiet cup of coffee anymore because they start at six-thirty, they'll go to eight o'clock and that's seven days a week. The, so anyway, so what I'm trying to figure out is how this got in here. We, I can't, there's no way I can see how this is A one, an A one operation because they remove the overburden of soil, they drill the rock, they blast it and they haul it out. Uh, so, and then, uh, I just, I just can't comprehend how we got a rock quarry in an A one agricultural forestry. Now, the term rock harvesting, I've heard that thrown around. I, I talked to the guy at the state of Tennessee in the T deck water, the mining section, and he says rock harvesting is a term specific to sandstone removal, not limestone. So anyway, I'd just really like to know how we got a rock quarry in our neighborhood. I mean, some people, when it first came in, people called and asked about it and they were talking, well, they're just gonna, uh, demolish a few trees and maybe park some equipment there and maybe build a shop. And when they started, it was forty-nine point nine acres. Now they've acquired a, an adjoining a hundred and sixteen acres total in there. So we don't want a rock quarry and we don't want industrial zoning there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Metz?
Thank you. And, uh, Hamdale Metz, I live at three sixty-three Battlefield Drive. And of course, my comments involve the quarry down here in Piedmont. I mean, it is a rock quarry depending on, regardless of what you want to call it. That's what it is. John Neal visited with us a little bit before the meeting and enlightened us a little bit about the thing. But what I want to talk about is some inconsistencies in the county. On one side of the county, you've got an individual that says he's been there for seven generations. That's an established family. He owns a small business. He wants to expand his business. And I'm not a proponent, you know, making, uh, changing the zoning to industrial. This man is trying to expand his business. He's a, sounds like a solid citizen, you know, and his business is an asset to the community. And he's not allowed to do that. And on the other side of the county, people from outside the county have been allowed to come in, establish this rock quarry. And I see, when I read about zoning and it, it's all convoluted to me, but I see terms like health hazard, noise, uh, nuisance, encroachment. This man in Straw Plains, I don't think his business would do any of that. But this rock quarry down here does all of that. It is an absolute assault on the community of Piedmont. And I'm not sure who's ultimately responsible for this, but somebody needs to pay, if it's with the state, somebody from the county, be the county mayor, of the commissioners, this group, the county attorney, needs to address this with the state and do something about it because it is a nuisance and I think a health hazard too. But we, we're very inconsistent about the way things are applied across the county. Thank you.
Thank you. That being the only three I had, we all start into new business? Oh, yeah, please come up.
Tina Moll? Tina Moll, yes. When this mine first started, it come out, we were told that they were developing the land. A land development company had purchased the land and was developing it. We were told that they were putting homes in, they didn't know what they were going to put in there. A few months later, there was a sign posted that they needed to do runoff for the mine. That was in August and September. I spoke to someone at the commission, and they, well, I won't tell you. They told me from the beginning, they knew that they wanted to put a rock quarry in there, from the beginning. So I don't understand how they were able to do this. They're sneaking it underneath us, you know, the dust comes in. I'll sit and watch the dust come over the trees into my backyard. I can smell the dust, I can taste it. My grandchildren can't even play outside because it's so bad. My husband went to one of the neighbors, he thought it was forest fire, and noticed the dust. I walk out to the road, and I can see the dust so bad, I watched cars disappear into the dust. And this is not all the time, but it's most of the time. They're knowing it's just nonstop. I can hear, my husband is hard hearing, that's why he won't get a proper speech. Because he can't understand what you've got to say. But the TV is loud, the kids are running the house, I can still hear the noise. And it's nonstop, the explosions, our house shakes. I mean, I may be, I'm just barely on the other side of Supreme Court. And I can feel this. And it, to us, this is good, it's fairly, you know, A1. Someone's pointing, you know, the light of our house, at least you think they're off. So we're not happy with this, and none of us are.
Thank you. No others, we'll proceed for new business. The first one is a rezoning request from A1 to I-1 for property at Sockless Road, Danridge by Barbara and Anthony Bernard and King Distillery Company, Kyle Spurlock.
There you go.
I'm fine, sir, there you go.
Thank you. As we discussed in the last meeting, we were looking at that property on Sockless Road to develop initially barrel houses to store whiskey and bourbon in, ultimately to build a larger production facility. And then as we build that larger production facility, we can look at the tourism component, what we can do on that property, which would be retail store, restaurant, some event spaces. We've also looked into, based on some of the comments that were made here, how we could put lodging or cabins of some sort on that property to continue to draw people to Jefferson County for something that really there isn't anything else in this entire area that this would be like having 92 acres at our disposal to do something like this. I mean, it would be similar to a, ultimately be similar to a small blackberry farm, based on what we could do there. One of the things we've looked at, and I know you all seen the information that I submitted on the economic impact for the state of Tennessee when it comes to whiskey tourism. In 2022, there was over $3 billion that came into the state of Tennessee through direct sales in retail stores, hospitality, lodging, food, so forth and so on. And this would allow Jefferson County to certainly get a big part of that. Because there isn't anything like this would be, even in Sevier County. With everything they have there, there's nothing like this would be, again, given the amount of properties we would have to work with and what we, what we could do there, and the product that we would produce there. This would be real craft whiskey, real craft bourbon, real craft Tennessee moonshine, not flavored grain neutral spirits, telling all the tourists it's moonshine. So everything we would do there would be handcrafted, built on site. I did look into something that we could do, I think, quicker than building a lodge there. And I found some of this after, I had sent the information to Stephanie, so I kind of want to pass those around. That's a new project that's in Kentucky. And as you can see, some of the pricing they're charging for that, they're bringing in a fairly upscale type of tourist to this. And those, I can see happening much quicker than a lodge on that property. And those could be scattered throughout the property, not taking up space we'll ultimately need for additional barrel houses or the production facility and so forth. Still leaving room at the top of the hill, I think is the prettiest view of that piece of property, to ultimately do a lodge at some point, a small scale lodge, 50 to 70 hours. That we could put at the top of that hill. And I think there's some things we could do to work together with the county, to work together with some of the cities, or we could actually have shuttle buses that would take the guests from the lodge or the cabins to the shops and restaurants and so forth in Danridge, in Jefferson City, and so forth and so on, and kind of get them out in the community and keep them from going somewhere else. So that's, that's where we are. You know, none of this, unfortunately, we can't do any of this with the current zoning of A1. Because as we discussed last time, our first barrel house will be 25,000 square feet, which will hold well over 100,000 gallons of spirit. And that's just the first barrel house. Since our last meeting, you know, we were talking about what we're doing in our current facility. We have contracts that we're working on right now for another 8,000 barrels just for this year. So we're, we're pretty close to actually being out of production for 2024. We'll be at our maximum capacity that we can do at our existing facility when we start production in about four weeks. So we'll be needing to do something pretty quickly to be able to build something, store the barrels for this year and then moving forward. But again, we can't do that with A1. We would need, we would need I-1 zoning to be able to do what we need at this property.
Okay, a couple of questions after you've mentioned some things here is that, the first phase, I think, is that basically is that you need the warehouse for distillery, which needs to go into an I-1 zone.
Correct.
But then you also mentioned some housing and some food and some lodging, which cannot go in an I-1 zone. Okay, so I guess the question is, is that if those are your plans, you don't need all the property into I-1 then, correct?
Well, when we were here last time, the tourism component came up of what we could do there to bring some tourism into Jefferson County, which we're, you know, completely happy to do. But if we need to separate part of that property at some point to put the lodge, and that would be at the top of the property, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that property. I know Stephanie, you are.
Yeah, we, we have a story down there.
Part of that property, if the topography rises as you go towards the top of the hill, so that, I would say it's probably 20 acres at the top of the hill that has a beautiful view of the mountains. And so it would be a shame to waste that view and put barrel houses up there or a production building. So when we were talking about the tourism component, that's where we thought we could save that piece of property to ultimately put cabins or a lodge or something of that nature. And that would still give us plenty of property at the bottom of the hill to do everything we need to do, even for years to come. Now, what about retail and a restaurant tied into the distillery? Will that function in I-1?
No, it not will.
Now, that's, that's where-
So that would need to be a part of that property at the top of the hill, essentially.
I think that would probably-
Well, because we're looking at 93.8 acres for a rezoning. And I understand what you're wanting to do here. And I know what, in order to do the still, the amount that you want to do, it's going to require an I-1 zone, okay? But there again, in the I-1 zone, we do not allow for housing and food and lodges. So that's what I'm saying. Part, I'm not saying that you couldn't come back and ask for that to be rezoned to something that would allow that, okay? But, and the only reason I'm telling you this is because I don't want you to think that because what you're here, you're telling us is going to be allowed, all that's going to be allowed under an I-1 zone. If you want to read that, Jordan, for us.
What's that?
What's allowed in an I-1?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure there's no lodging or residential, I don't think.
No, there's definitely no residential. Manufacturing, food processing, distilleries, brewers, and wineries, as regulated in Article 7, 7.12. And then nothing else that's really related. Brewers-
Would that not include retail component? I mean-
Well, you'll have to go to this and see exactly what it says.
That's what it says, much other than the size of-
I think it's it.
Yeah, just sat back and-
I don't know if that would be considered an accessory use for a distillery, is food, print, sell, I don't know. I mean, I know in other places it is, especially in Sevier County. They go hand in hand, it seems like. It's just, I don't know here if we've got a-
They have your decision for the BGA.
Could be.
You know, I think from a, from a housing standpoint, we're talking lodging or even cabins. I mean, that's, that would be three to five years down the road. I mean, our, our initial projects would be to get the first barrel house up and running, drill a well because we need the spring water. And then probably within the next 12 months, we'd start looking at an expansion of our current production facility and build most likely a 50,000 square foot production building on that property. So, you know, I certainly think that the lodging component is something we could look at down the road or even possibly in an adjacent piece of property, because I know there's some additional property on down, abutting this. You know, right now, our biggest concerns are being able to build a larger production facility from a point and putting in barrel houses. We certainly would love to do some retail if it's, if it's feasible on that piece of property at some point. But again, that might be something we'd have to look at doing on an adjacent piece of property.
And refresh my memory again, the barrel house that you're looking at is how big?
25,000 square feet.
25,000 square feet.
That would be the first one that we, that we would build, would be 25,000 square feet. Now, as demand increases and our production increases, it would most likely make sense for us to build one additional 50,000 square foot barrel house as opposed to two 25,000 square feet.
But to fill these barrel houses up, you're going, right off the bat, you would need a distillery operation right there, correct?
No, we actually, we have a building that we're leasing right now, which we're starting our production in. But, you know, we ultimately want to move out of that building because we are leasing it. So we'd like to find a home, so to speak, where we can not only have barrel houses, but have our, our expanded production facility on that same piece of property. And, you know, the topography of that makes it very well suited for barrel houses. You don't want them all on a flat piece of property. You want some air circulation. And of course, water is available there is a huge component of what we need as well.
Okay. When, when do you think you would start the distilling operation on site?
That would probably be within 12 months. The barrel house construction would happen fairly quickly.
Fairly quickly.
So the, the well that we would get.
Am I correct? And when I'm looking at this, am I correct that he could, he could do the barrel houses right now?
Yeah. Yes, it's A1.
Yes, sir. We can, but there's a capacity issue like we spoke about last time. We can only put, I think it's 50,000 gallons in each.
Oh, that's an A1, I think.
That's an A1, I'm just saying, so.
Any barrel house.
So on the 25,000 square feet, first building there, how much would that store, gallon wise?
Approximately 130, 35,000 gallons.
Oh, okay, so you're well over it.
And with, with what we have, even in contracts right now, and the, you know, our production, we still have some allocation left that we can sell, that we're talking to people about. We're well over 50,000 gallons right now.
So really, the issue boils down to is just the scope of work. How much you can and can't do. That's what it boils down to.
I should have read the rest of it, because if we do rezon this to I-1, I mean, it's 90, almost 90, almost 94 acres. We'll basically be creating a new industrial corridor, new industrial-
Park.
Yes, yeah, so it's not a spot, in my opinion, it's not a spot zone. It's, it's not. To establish that, you'd have, you'd have to establish that it benefited this property owner at the expense of the other adjacent property owners. And they, if they could document that and that. But the size of this property, I think, would take it out of that. That's just my opinion, of course, the lawyer left, so can't get his take on it. But I don't think it's illegal to do this rezon. I don't, it's just, it's a big rezon, it's going to create a new industrial district. If it doesn't work out for this gentleman, and of course, we hope it does, you know, if, if they end up subdividing some of it or selling it or something, you know, you could have mining there, you could have refinement of raw materials, truck terminals, mini warehouses, warehousing, indoor storage, wholesale trade, outdoor storage yards, outdoor storage of motor vehicles, lumber sales, adult uses, payday entitled loan businesses, outdoor shooting ranges, solar energy system and wind energy systems, custom slaughterhouses, and methadone clinics, special exception. So just keep that in mind as you look at it, you know.
And it certainly is not our intent to subdivide it because we really need all the property. So, you know, that's, again, one of the things that's appealing to us about it is it's property we're not going to be outgrowing in the next five years.
We went and looked at the property, me and Tim did, and drove around. And there's a few homes around there on Sockless Road there in the vicinity. I think what this gentleman's proposing wouldn't be a nuisance, from what I, from what I hear. The property looks at least somewhat appropriate for this type of use. However, it depends on how it's developed, and, you know, there's a lot of factors there that, you know. And again, if somehow it doesn't turn into this, but something else, it could be more, more of an intense, more of an obnoxious use or something. So just something to keep in mind. You have to, you have to figure that the most intense use is going to happen there. Even if it looks like, you know, even if the initial proposal is not that, you have to kind of factor that in. Ultimately, the decision's the county commission.
If he wanted to put a restaurant thing or something else, do you have to spot some of that?
Well, we'd have to come back and, and he could do that in an A1, if there's A1 around it. So if he ever decided to go back and take a portion of that to A1, he could.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, or he could request it, and so-
Or do a master plan and-
Right, exactly.
Only rezon the portion of I-1 that you really need from I-1.
Ryan.
Or just go back and rezon.
Or you could go back and rezon.
For A1, actually.
Yeah, easily.
I think that would probably work better for us because, again, we, you know, at this point, not knowing that we can do what we initially want to do with the land, we haven't done a master plan or really said, okay, here's where the barrel houses are going to go. Here's potentially where retail and a restaurant could go. You know, that's something obviously we'd like to take a look at. Because I, I think the area is prime for it. And again, I think it could be really something, something good for Jefferson County as well.
I have a question, how many jobs do you plan on?
The barrel houses are very low, you know, as far as employees go. Each barrel house, and they won't be there all day, there'll be a couple of people, two to three people, you know, moving barrels in, checking things, so forth and so on. Now, that 50,000 square foot production facility that, again, we hope to be able to start on in the next year, you're looking at three shifts of people, you're looking at 75 people. And that has, you know, no retail, no restaurants, that's just people working in the production.
Preferably local.
Absolutely.
You're not wanting to get out of zoning, are you? It's got to be easier.
Will these barrel houses, will they be seen by the-
A 25,000 square foot building's going to be seen by quite a few people, I think.
Well, the way that property is laid out, though, I mean, it's not going to be right there.
It depends on where you put your-
Yeah, right.
It depends on where they put it.
And we're not planning on putting any of the buildings, even the production facility, close to any of the roads. I mean, we, you know, until we have a retail location and a restaurant, if in fact we do that, we sort of just want to be back in there and nobody really even knows what's going on back there.
You know, of course, you guys would see a site plan. You'd have to approve a site plan before they do the-
Before we build anything.
This is just a rezoning.
So if we, we have a site plan, we're going to put in performance standards, like it's got to have a 50-foot tree buffer around that. You know, because this is a new-
After we rezoned, we could do that?
No, a site plan. We need to come back with a site.
Would, a question, Mr. Chairman. It's to Mr. Scarlett's point. So you talked about adding performance standards with a site plan.
Yes, that's where you'd add them at. Yes, that's where you'd add them at.
How would that work? You know, let's say, you know, he just makes a hundred million dollars and decides to retire. Nice to think about. And sells the property. Does that apply to the next property owner?
No, it applies.
If it changes uses, they have to bring a new site plan.
If they demolish and do something else, then yes.
So, but basically what we're talking about is just giant warehouses, it sounds like. So, when you say change use, I mean, there's a lot you could do with a twenty-five thousand square foot warehouse.
There is, uh, yeah.
Or a fifty thousand.
That's, yeah, that's why I'm saying, that's why what George was saying, those are the things we, you, you take in consideration. But if you have a change of use, as far as that goes, then they have to come back with a new site plan. Because we would look at the traffic flow would be one of the things that we would look at. We may, they may have to have new improvements as far as that goes for infrastructure. You know, uh, from, those are the types of things that, that may be required, that, that we could require.
Yeah, but if, if they're operating a warehouse business and we approve the site plan with those performance standards, they have to maintain the same performance standards as long as they stay in the warehouse business and use that site plan.
Yes.
Some of that sounds unenforceable, though. If you have a fifty thousand square foot warehouse, who's to say what's going on in there?
Well, the site plan would be for whatever, for whatever the building is, not necessarily the activity. Is that right or wrong, George?
Uh, yeah, no, the site plan is how you're going to build out the property. The use is, you know, the use has to be allowed in the zone.
That's what I'm saying. So, the site plan's where you put the physical structures. What goes on in those structures just needs to make sure it falls into the categories you listed off for I1. And that's my concern. We're talking about, how many buildings total do you foresee?
Over the course of the next ten years, I mean, there potentially could be seven or eight warehouses on that property.
Fifty thousand square foot warehouse?
Twenty-five to fifty thousand.
Twenty-five to fifty.
Partially twenty-five thousand square feet. As our volume, yearly volume grows, you know, again, it might make more economic sense for us to build a fifty thousand square foot building as opposed to a twenty-five thousand.
Certainly. So, my concern would be that we plop a bunch of fifty thousand square foot warehouses in. And then, um, you know, what happens in the future? Because the use, as long as it falls within our current I1, you could do that in those warehouses, right? Regardless of.
Yeah, yes.
So, you could have a custom slaughterhouse in one of those?
You could have an adult store in one of them slaughterhouses. And a slaughterhouse.
Be really conducive for somebody to do industrial type business in there because again, we're not going to put them side by side. We're going to scatter them about. And a barrel house really is nothing but a concrete floor, lighting, ventilation and a door. It's not like you would think somebody was going to put a business in. Because you, there, there's nothing going on in there except barrels sleeping and aging, right?
It's been, it's been brewed somewhere else or it's been.
Correct. It's been baked somewhere else. So, I mean, could you go in there and do something with the building? Yes. But you, you would have to make some changes to that building.
Certainly. My concern is if we pull the trigger on this and rezone it, and then you go in and build the buildings, you have a successful business and you cash out one day, what happens with what is essentially an industrial park that has, you know, quite a few permitted uses in it? And that, that's, I guess that's.
If we were, but let's just say, like you said, ten years down the road from now, we decide to sell the business to somebody. Remember that all of those barrel houses are going to be full. And, and we've been contracted by somebody to store those barrels for three to four years. So, whoever in my mind would, would buy us out would be somebody that was in the liquor business. Because A, they want all those barrel houses. They want whatever brands we've created. They want the production facility and they want the revenue that's being generated from those barrel houses storing other people's whiskey. Now, that just happened. I mean, you know, there's been a lot of that going on in the past two to three years where larger distilleries are buying smaller distilleries. And that's exactly why. You know, they, they buy the property for the use that it is being currently used for and they're keeping it that way, you know. So, I mean, could it happen differently?
Yeah, but there's.
Of course it could.
Uh, yeah, my issue is there's nothing that dictates it. Well, that's my issue.
No, once you rezone it, you have, you, 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 your hands are tied to some extent on, you have to allow, within reason, with reasonable performance standards or however you want it, with reasonable conditions, the uses that are allowed in that zone. So, yeah.
I mean, the buffering zone and stuff would, you know, that helps a little. I think that's what you were speaking to, John Neal.
And there's natural vegetation on that property.
Yeah.
So.
But what actually takes?
Lot of woods.
A lot of woods, some logging.
If somebody were to come in there, just me asking this, if somebody were to come in there and want to do a slaughterhouse or whatever, they would have to come to you for approval to do something like that for part of the permitting or those sorts of things. Wouldn't that fall into the nuisance category? I mean, couldn't you say, oh, there's houses around this, that's going to be loud, it's going to be noisy, it's going to be.
Would, no. If we have guidelines in place, if we have guidelines in place for it and, and, and they meet those guidelines, then legally they can do that, okay? So, you know, back when we, I, I remember when we were doing these and the thing that we were looking at was is that we were trying to get ahead of the curve. We knew that this was a potential for business and we thought would be not a bad business. It could be a good business as far as it goes. But then we looked at the scope and the first thing is, is that when we're sitting there looking at the scope is, is that first thing when you think of distillers, microbrewers, is you think of Budweiser, who's huge, okay? That's typically not the way it works anymore as far as it goes. The problem we had is, it's the same thing here, is, is that we didn't increase the scope enough, uh, the, the limits to allow you to do what you wanted to do. Yeah. It's not to say that you can't do this there. It's just that the scope i- is, is, is not there for you to do it. You know, you could, you can.
Scale.
The scale. Yeah, it's the scale. You, you. So, you know, it's not that, that what, what you're wanting to do is not allowed use. It's just the fact that you could, uh, and you can't do as much as, uh, as you want to do. And so, you know, the thing is, is, is it, this will just, whatever it is, it'll be a recommendation from us to county commission as, as far as that goes. But we have, we, I thought we, we needed to justify in our mind whether or not we felt like that this property being rezoned from A1 to I1 at this location is something that you could recommend, knowing what could go in there. Okay? So, that's, that's really, that's really our issue is that there. It's, it doesn't really matter how many, right now, how, how big or whatever. We know that he has to have I1. And do, do you feel comfortable with this being I1? I wish the, I wish zoning had condition, conditional uses, but it doesn't unless they're already built in. We, you can't say, okay, we rezoned this, but if you didn't do what you're going to tell us to do, then we can rezon it back. It doesn't work that way. So.
If you listen to his word and, you know, it, it's, I mean, but we can't make a contract with him.
No, we cannot.
Well, and the rezoning isn't really anything to do with, with you. It's the piece of property.
It's the property.
And whoever owns it, that's the zone.
All he's doing is telling us what he wants to do. And the reason that he needs to get I1.
Nine times out of ten or more, you know, it's, what somebody says they're going to do is what they end up doing. So, but not ten out of ten. So, I mean, you, you.
Well.
It also in the future, like you said.
Yeah, I have no reason not to trust you on what you're saying. My concern is what happens after you, after you hit it big in the liquor business.
I like your train of thought, by the way.
It's what I think about all day. Do the warehouses and stuff need to be on this property? I mean, I, I know you'd prefer it, obviously. You're here requesting.
I mean, for, for a lot of reasons, I mean, location, you know.
Is it logistics thing?
Topography is good, again, because we need airflow, we need elevation changes for the warehouses. Uh, and, and the fact that there's, you know, incredible water underneath that property that we can drill a well and, and use for the production of the whiskey because the spring water's pretty critical.
Yeah.
And, and so as it stands right now, we're actually hauling water to our facility that we have now, which we're not real crazy about. So, having access to that water is important too. And, you know, there's really not a lot of property anywhere around that has all of those things in one package. You know, because we've looked, I mean, there's just, there's really nothing around.
Does Jack Daniels have a spring?
Yes, ma'am. They have a limestone spring actually on their property in, in Mitchburg. And that's why Jack Daniels originally chose that location.
Yeah.
Was because of the limestone spring. And that's why in Kentucky, most of the distilleries are there, choose their property because there's access to the limestone aquifer that runs under there.
So, they're just storing it, right?
For now.
For now. They will manufacture. That's what their plans are. But for now, it's just, it's just storage until they can get the manufacturing facility going, then they will store more.
But back to your point, really, all we're talking about tonight is A1 to I1.
That's it. It's, yeah, it's, that's, that's, that's the bottom line, okay? Right there. And if you feel comfortable with it, making that recommendation. And based upon, Jordan, if I'm correct, you have no issue with it because of the size of, of the track?
Yeah, from a legal standpoint, no. In terms of the appropriateness of the, of an I1 zone for that, um, vicinity, I think it's okay. And with, with the site plan, um, we'll just have to, you know, that, that's a, that's an additional step that we take before it gets developed with the site plan. And so.
Building locations.
Exactly. With, with that in mind, yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's okay. That's my, that's my take. Ultimately, it's a legislative decision whether or not the county wants industrial there. Um, but yeah, from my standpoint, I don't see any major issues with it.
We got a proper motion here to recommend the rezoning from A1 to I1 to the county commission?
I'll stick.
And a second. Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? Everybody understand we're voting out here, correct? All right. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed?
No.
All right, sir.
This will go to county commission and a.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a nice evening.
The next one's pulled. Okay. So, item, agenda B is pulled. So, the next item will be a preliminary class thirty-nine lots off of Laura Bowling Loop and Barbara Road and Strawberry Plains by Daniel Stacey.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's big. The only thing he ain't got to done is road profile. And he didn't really know it. This surveyor's out of Virginia. They don't know all our roads and rigs, but he will. Um, do you have to have a road profile?
He's supposed to.
Yeah.
Drainage, uh, where's the water, Nolan? Um, I'm assuming you haven't had an engineer look at this yet? We need to get an engineer to at least look at the drive, the runoff, the stormwater. Um, I'm sure it's not that complicated for this site, you know, but, road profile, stormwater, drainage.
What about?
Supposed to show the water line too.
Uh, it's on there, I believe. Our, our.
Our, our water line.
But it goes all around the.
It's already running.
The water's already in. Is this Newmarket water? Is this Newmarket or KEB?
KEB.
KEB. Have they, did they sign off on your water line plan and everything?
Well, it's already there.
Don Bowman put it in years ago. Years and years ago, when you built the road halfway.
Do we know what side line?
Eight inch. It took me eight inch.
Oh, it's an eight inch line in there? Oh, okay. That's.
And it's got fire in it.
Yeah.
All around it there.
I see them there. That's.
So, what marks existing?
Do I?
So, what the two fire huts that's on here exist?
Yeah, they're already in right here. Yeah. He's already put eight inch water line in.
It's actually got a big water tank too that it's going there, you know.
I don't know. We plan on, uh, selling these lots or putting a house out? The, the, the first part of it was done years ago by Mr. Bowen with double lines. So, I mean, I don't know what you.
Probably around the same, you know, but even at the same, you know, you're not going to go and build out of that long community there.
Right, right. He had, uh, me and Charlie Dipton went down there when he first contacted me and looked at the road. I, I thought I remembered something years ago about it. And it's got a good foundation and everything Charlie, um, said. It ain't going to take a whole lot to fix it to kind of really stand it. Don, you know, had all that himself. But he, the economy went bad. He never did do the second phase of it.
And he actually already had something made out. He just didn't record.
Right. He did. I forgot about that.
Have you done, uh?
Well, and I told him he'd have to have a road line by the final. If he didn't have a road put in.
What about soils? Have you? You've already done soils? Has Tom already reviewed those or?
I don't think Tom's seen them, but he, he's done the soils.
So, he got the soils, okay.
Tom don't have to see them.
That'll have to be on the final, that'll become for the final. So, I think, well, the only thing I'm, the only thing I got is, is.
For all of these house sites, the right size, I mean, have they got?
Well, right here, he's.
Seven percent.
Right here, he's got twenty-eight by seventy, and I don't know if that's a.
I, I understand that, but that's, the lot size varies and it's, it's not based on.
Do you understand what he's?
No, they're all over forty thousand square foot.
That was the rules that they told me of, the forty thousand square foot per lot. And we moved them in. Their sum's a little bigger than that because they, you know, had to.
Yeah, but what we have is, is, is that we have a, a designated place that the surveyor shows where a house is going to go based upon a topography.
And that's drilled on the map where the.
So, what he's got right there is.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, it makes a seven percent.
Supposed to by the surveyor.
Less than ten percent slope.
That's why you see them on our different ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. I gave him all the rigs to go by.
So, these are houses you're putting in here?
Yes.
Those square, yeah. Well, no, they're double wides. Well, it could be houses.
In the state of Tennessee.
So, you're planning, which are you planning on putting in there? Double wides?
Well, the neighbors are double wides, you know, there's only fifty of them beside of it's double wide. So, you're not going, it's going to have to be something similar.
I agree with that.
Double wide's considered a stickville home in, in my state law. So, you have to treat it the exact same. Can't zone it differently. A mobile home, single wide, you can. That's, that's a different use.
Okay. So, right now, a drainage plan. And a bond for the road? Is that it?
Road profile.
They had a road profile.
Road profile, yeah.
Well, that looks good. I mean, that's just appropriate location for, I don't know. See any other issues?
So, a question? I'm sorry. I, I was going to suggest is this, is that, uh, since this is a preliminary, he has to come in with a bond for the road, uh, as far as it goes. If he's gets ready for, he, he's either going to fix the road or get a bond. Okay. Uh, bring us a road profile and a drainage plan, all right? So, could we give preliminary approval based upon those items there having to come back to us before we prove to find them?
I, I don't, well, once we approve a preliminary, he can get to work though.
That's true. That's what I'm saying.
We need the engineer to work first, in my mind. I think we need to do it till next month and.
Okay.
If there's any way we could, I mean, but I just, without having engineer look at and provide at least road profiles and, I guess a surveyor would be those.
Surveyor, I would soon do it, yeah.
But, and the drainage.
Yeah, he said he could do the road profile and profile.
So, the drainage would be the only issue that we have.
Drainage report, just make sure the water's running, you know, where it's supposed to and it's not going to cause any problems.
I don't think it'll have any problem.
Okay.
The deaches and everything's already, you know.
Yeah, no. No, it was pretty good. No, it was good. It was pretty good.
We just need engineer to certify, that's all, that, you know, that kind of thing. So, because I'm not engineering, none of us are too, so, that'll be mine.
Okay.
So, you're recommending move to next month?
For a drainage plan and a road profile. We need to. We got a proper motion and second. Any other discussion? Everybody understand what we need? Okay, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
If you get said aye, I think everything else is good. All right, next item, uh, is a site plan review for an addition to an existing commercial building at twenty-five seventy, Highway twenty-five seventy west, by Mr. David Brooks.
I don't think this is Mr. Brooks.
Okay, so, I'm looking. We have it in our pack?
Yeah, it's in your package, it should be. Um, they're just adding on to a commercial building down there for a record service.
Okay, that's right, I saw that, yes. I, I, I had it here somewhere.
Another record service.
Yeah, I, I, I saw it earlier, so.
We already, we already proved one, man, sorry.
They had the, the gate closed, so we couldn't go back behind it there. I don't think there's a problem with it.
Yeah. Yeah, we need more records.
Body shops. I looked at this earlier, I didn't, I didn't see any issues.
You got plenty of room back there. Plenty of room back there.
Yeah, you look at it, you have any issues?
We couldn't get in there, but we don't.
Okay.
Here we go.
Yeah, that's what I'm about, yeah.
Appropriate site for it.
It's just about, what, a thousand square feet? About a thousand square feet is what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But actually, have you got, what, do you have the plan?
Yeah, it's right here, yeah. It's showing a twenty by fifty, it's worth that.
I'm just coming off of, oh, wait. We're just coming off the building here, right over there, come back to you in a little brush here, here, there, and the whole building is rotted.
Okay. I don't think we should, for just what is there, I don't think anything, as far as drainage, it's a small site.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think we're gonna be drastically doing anything as far as drainage.
It's already impervious now.
Yeah.
But, yes, sir.
And then, like I say, with it being in the rear of the building, setback issues, I don't think we're in, coming to play as, as far as it goes. It's on the corner. Anybody else have any issues that they see with it?
You want a motion?
Well, I'll entertain one if you want.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I move to approve.
I got a motion to approve. Proper motion? I'll second. And second, uh, any other discussion? All, all those say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? You deal. Uh, we had a discussion on the land use plan, but Jordan's, he's a little under the weather. I hope I don't get under the weather sitting beside of him.
I'm sorry.
So my, my suggestion would be, I just have to tell you, it's feeling a little bit better, we may, your next meeting, we might want to roll that, I just need a motion to do that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I move to, move this to the next meeting.
Okay, I got a proper motion.
I second that.
Any other business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, we're on other business now?
Yes.
So we heard the several citizens speak on the rock quarry, or whatever, whatever we wanna call that, in the Piedmont community. Uh, how, how do we as a county go about investigating what's going on there?
Well, you know, the gentleman came to me before he started doing what he wanted to do. He told me what he wanted to do, and I told him he would have to get his property rezoned, okay? Because when you read the definition that we have in here for quarrying, basically it is, is that it's crushing on site and selling on site, all right? And so I told him, I said, you know, you can, if you wanna come and ask for rezoning, you can. I said, I, I'm not gonna guarantee you're gonna get it, it's not, it won't be our call, it'll just be our recommendation as far as that goes for the plan. So the question boils down to is, is this, okay? When does clearing your land become a different operation other than clearing your land? And when do we tell people that, where, where is that fine line that determines that? All right, so if, if, if people come and say, the state says that's a quarrying operation, well, if it is, then he's, he's, he's a zoning violation by doing that, okay? Because that means that he did, so, so who makes that determination of whether or not it's, it's a clearing of land to quarry? That's, that's, that's the fine line. Once you determine that, if, if it's just clearing land, because if you say that on clearing land, then you're gonna have to say, well, how much clearing can someone do before it's considered to be mining, okay?
Is there a definition for that, Jordan, or?
I'm sorry, Terry.
No. In our, in our, there's no mining or quarrying definition in our zone.
There's not, so, you know, so when he, but the thing is, is that what we're saying is, is this, is that he can't crush it there, and he can't sell it there, okay? Which he's not doing, the way I understand it.
No, he's not.
But the problem is, is that, you know, when do we tell somebody they can't clear their land? To what extent does that come into play, all right? So if the state of Tennessee comes in and says, we're saying, our definition is, is that it's a quarrying and a mining operation, okay? If that's the case, then basically, he's in, i- if that's, if that's true, then he would be in violation, he would, it would be his own violation. And it would be a legal matter, uh, basically of saying that he had to cease and desist.
Stop working on it.
Yes.
But the state would have to stop it?
No.
We would.
The state, the state doesn't, the state doesn't really care, because they don't look at zoning when they issue these, these permits, okay?
That's my understanding.
Because there's counties that have no zoning, so that, that's irrelevant to them, all right?
That burden falls on the county.
That burden would fall on the county, and it would be, it would boil down to a legal issue. Is it, is it, is he legally in violation of the zoning law for that?
And when I first got a call, I went down there, and our planner, David Williams, is dead now. He, his opinion, he could take the rock out there, just like he could dirt, like they do on Highway ninety-two. And it wasn't a violation of zoning, and that's what I went by. And I went and talked to Weyland, and he wanted to crush way back in, and I said, no, you can't do that, you are, you are in violation then. Because I checked with David again about that, but he said we couldn't stop him from hauling the rock out, which is what he was doing. He told me he was doing, taking its spirit out, even crushing it and selling it.
That's what he said, that's, that's.
And I had no reason to not believe him, I mean, I still think he'd do that.
Can you dig down, though, and keep digging and get?
Dig dirt down and deep.
Till you hit China?
I don't know, I, you know, I, I'm just saying.
There's no rules about that.
Because we, we have nothing in here that dictates the scope, okay, uh, to a certain point. Only thing he says, there was two or three things. One is, is that he's taking the rock, he's hauling it to a different county to have it crushed, and, and sold, okay? And until the, until there's a determination here, as far as that goes, to give a definition of what?
A quarry.
That he's, he's quarrying. If he, if he, if that's determined legally, then you can cease and, give him a word of cease and desist.
Wouldn't we have to change rules?
Well, if we divided now, post hoc, it wouldn't apply to him.
Correct.
Grandfather, and so we'd have to come to a determination as a quasi judicial matter here, as to what is mining or quarrying, I think, and then apply that. If we wanna use the states, then we can do that, I mean, that's reasonable to me, if the state determines this is a mining operation, um, and it's not allowed in that zone, I, you know, that's, to me, that's a reasonable justification to say we're seeking this.
Is the storm water protect, is it a storm water permit?
It's kinda fine, I'm just with. What kind of permit?
Yeah, see, anybody that does construction or digging work on major projects here basically has to have a, a storm water protection permit for their storm water.
Well, this doesn't say storm water, this is mining water.
Mining water, okay.
I talked to the guy, Daniel Lawrence, at the state, the mining section, that issues the rest of the waste water, the permits for the water. They got a permit of quarrying and crushing to that site. Their permit covers that.
Don't mean they, they're not doing it there.
But they said if you guys to.
They're not crushing rock.
Well, if Daniel thinks that they're crushing rock.
No, they're not.
They, they had, they had a.
Can he, can you provide informa, uh, uh, some certification, verification from this?
My style, my style, they wouldn't.
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about from, from this gentleman from the state stating that, in his opinion, that they are crushing rock, and, and, and they're on that property.
You just want a letter signed?
Well, all I'm saying is, is that, you know, if, if, if we're gonna make this, if somebody's gonna make this determination, say that it's in violation.
Well, my only question to start was, how would we even go about this?
Well.
I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves here.
It's really, basically, it's a legal issue.
So.
Either he is or he isn't, and if he is, then it's a zoning violation, if he isn't, it's not. So that's, that's the, that's, it's, it's really that simple, I think.
Jordan, are you?
I agree with what Terry laid it out.
Are you aware, mining permits, is that, would that be a public record?
Yeah.
So I mean, if someone's asserting, if someone's asserting he has, uh, whatever mining permit, can that be pulled as proof?
Okay, so it can be used as, as proof, as, it's not conclusive proof, because you can get a mining permit, but then not do mining.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, so it's, um, we, we would have to probably in a court of law demonstrate, you know, a reasonable doubt? I'm not sure what standard that's, that we use, but we'd have to demonstrate that he is in fact mining, and that it's not allowed in that zone, here.
So if, if you, if you were to take this to the county attorney, and, and you were to lay it out and said, okay, look, here's what it is. In your opinion, is he in violation based on what he's doing? And based upon that information, that's why I'm just looking for that statement, okay? That.
He has a mining permit?
Well, we can get a.
I would like to see the permit.
Permit probably is, is public record, we can get it, but when you, you, what I was looking at was, you said the gentleman said that basically that he was quarrying on the property.
Well, he said, uh, when he looked at, what is it, Vexel View from Tennessee Park?
Yes.
He looked down and he saw something that looked like, he said, well, that looked like a rock, and I was a little bit leery of that, because I know that they make screening things, too. Where you dump the rock on, and it's sort of, and the conveyor belts out, and this side's gonna be that side.
No, that's a separator, what I, I went down there and looked at it.
Well, according to equipment manufacturer, they call it a screener.
Well, he's, all it is, is separating the dirt from the rock, so he ain't hauling dirt with the rock. I went down there and looked at it.
No, he's not hauling dirt with the rock. He's hauling rock on.
Yeah, I, I knew.
So that would be?
Is this not a nuisance?
Well.
Jordan.
It's called a nuisance and the dirt, and I mean, this is, this is wearing on us, and the ones that live there. I mean, it's wearing on us. It's a nuisance, I mean, it's, it's unsatiable. I mean, people come into any, and this, this what we're gonna say.
Okay.
The children that go to school, and they're breathing this, this dust, which EPA tells us that twenty times more than COVID. And our children are at the school every day, they're outside on this playground, and they're breathing this dust.
Has the EPA, has?
EPA will come out and say, they're, they're only putting this in the groundwater.
But there is air quality.
They will come out and say about the air quality. They said, we can, they can send somebody out to test it, but we don't know when these, when the dust is gonna come across our property.
Well, that's the thing with the, doing the test for the air quality, is the fugitive dust, as they call it. You have to call the, the D E A, and he said, and bring up dust, and I'll send somebody out, well, you know, half an hour, an hour, it's gone, and they have to measure for an hour. They, they look for a ten minute period here in an hour, is what they do, so it, it's not, uh...
So what, basically what it is, is they need something to set up their monitors for twenty-four hours a day, and then they would be able to do it, correct?
Yeah, they don't do that.
This is good, our house is, you know, I mean, you're in bed at seven o'clock in the morning, and your house is, you know, and you don't, I'm a three-year-old granddaughter, coming running in the house screaming, because the road's falling out, and, you know, it, it, you know, and we're just, it's day and night.
I think, I mean, this is, I mean, I think best way to handle it, we have the county approach, so if we determine that it's not allowed there.
Well, they're trying to be reselling from A1 to I-1.
They are?
No, they didn't try.
They didn't try?
Uh, did, did we not talk to you last time, talk about this?
No, that's, that's.
Oh, ma'am.
No, that's, uh...
That was a, that was a special use permit that Mr. Scarlett had added.
Special use permit would allow them to do that.
Just to, they wanted to crush it, but that didn't last.
Well, because it has to go through another board.
Yeah, but it, it's, probably did, it's dead in the water, I mean, most likely dead in the water.
The crush is not the issue, it's the person that makes the town.
Right.
The violation and the class that are there now.
I tell you, how, how about, how about this, uh, Mr. Chairman? I, as a county commissioner, I, why don't I just get in touch with, uh, our county attorney and get his thoughts?
And if he says that in his opinion, that they are in violation, then it's a zoning violation, and then it'd be no different than any other zoning violation as far as that goes, then it's, it's usually a cease and desist.
And we'll send Pomp down there to serve it?
Well.
I'll leave the first one on the paper.
So I'm just saying that that's, that, that's the issue, you know, people think that the planning commission, basically, we don't have any police power. We can't do, we don't, we, we, we don't enforce anything, as far as, we don't have any power.
I know, I had to go buy my own badge when I got on this commission.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, i- i- if there are violations, it has to go through the zoning office and the county attorney. Then we'll basically make that determination if there is a violation, and then that's how it's addressed.
Yeah. They could file a private suit, but I don't think that'd be nearly.
That may be hard to pursue.
To do that, because if we allow it as a county, then you file suit for nuisance or for damages or something like that, that's something you can consider, but maybe wait on that.
As an appropriate next step, because the citizens have come and asked us something, I think we owe the citizens some due diligence here. I think rather than all of us talking circles, take it to Mr. Drinon and let him fret over it.
He can look at the facts, okay, uh, from that standpoint, look at our zoning, and if he sees there's a violation there, then he can say, yes, I think there's a violation at that point in time, then you could file a cease and desist.
Okay, well, to.
And then, I mean, that's.
To those citizens that came tonight to speak on that issue, I'll be in touch with the county attorney this week and, and see, um, can we go ahead and put this on the agenda for February, um, for discussion, and I can, I could just report back in February what?
Sure, I mean, it's.
Well, yeah, but if.
We can put it back other, other business calls, at that point in time, or we can put it in here as old business, however you wanna put it, do it. But, uh, we can put it in here as old business, if you wanna come back and tell us at that point in time what you found.
Okay. Yeah, I would like that, yeah.
Okay. All right.
That'd be the fourth Tuesday in February.
Well, hopefully he would have an answer before, before then.
I just don't have a way, though.
I mean, you know, he's got to.
Research it.
Yeah, research it, do his due diligence as far as it goes, so, okay. Uh, anything else? Everybody remember their ethics?
Yep.
Did you get it taken care of?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I haven't done one.
Okay, you haven't done yours?
It's, I mean, I've got it, I took it out of the envelope.
Oh, okay.
Had to go find, well, I'm on county commission.
Okay.
I'll tell you what.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, man. I can't, I'm sick for a month.
All right. No, no other business, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
A proper motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.